Good evening. Welcome to this October 7, 2024, meeting at the Norfolk City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Real call, please.
Greenquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Mirren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. If no discussion, please vote.
I just need one more. Yep, nope, you're good. I need one more.
Nope, that's all.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right. Item number six, I would look for approval of the full agenda with one change. There's been council request to remove item number 25. So we'd look for a motion with that change.
I'll make a motion as amended.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
That takes us to item number 21 on the council agenda under special presentations. There are three different presentations tonight. The first is proclaiming October 6 through 13, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week. The proclamation reads as such: Whereas the city of Norfolk is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our state, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire; and whereas home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, fire departments in the U.S. responded to 360,000 home fires; and whereas Norfolk residents, I'm sorry, whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half; and smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely; whereas Norfolk residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home; and whereas Norfolk residents will make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities; and Norfolk residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month; and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire; and whereas Norfolk's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education; and Norfolk residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes; and whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home, now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Mooney, Mayor of Norfolk, do hereby proclaim October 6 through 12 as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Norfolk. And I urge all citizens to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Norfolk's fire and emergency services. It looks like we have several members of the Norfolk Fire Division here tonight, so whoever has been volunteered to come receive the proclamation, please come forward.
Kelly, good job.
All right. Say a few words, Chief, very good.
Honestly, I don't have much other than I'm just very proud of the team. Obviously, they've been really busy this year, running nearly 312 ahead of last year. And our fire prevention team, our fire marshal, fire inspectors, our shift personnel, our assistant chief, have been doing a phenomenal job to get out in the community and be in the schools and teach the little ones from a young age and their parents how to take care of themselves, whether it be through a fire escape plan or operating smoke detector. So really proud of our whole time reserve staff and the fire service in general. So thank you for this, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Thank you to everyone from the Fire Division for being here. Needless to say, we're all very proud and grateful for the work that you all do day in and day out to protect the community. Don't go far. The next presentation is from the Norfolk Morning and Noon Optimist Clubs, recognizing a member of the Norfolk Fire Division.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Evening, Mark.
My name is Mark Clausen. I am the president of the Norfolk Noon Optimist Club. One of the purposes of an optimist club is to inspire a respect for law. And one of the ways we do this each year is by recognizing some of the outstanding people we have working in that area. During National Night Out, we had the opportunity to recognize a member of the Norfolk Police Division and a State Patrol. Tonight, we're taking advantage of this opportunity, being at Fire Prevention Week, to recognize a member of the Norfolk Fire Division. And this nomination was made by Lieutenant Brock Soderbergh. I would like to nominate firefighter/paramedic Ethan Larson for the 2024 Noon Optimist Firefighter Award. Over the course of Ethan's career, he has always shown dependability, strong work ethic, and a leader of the pack when it comes to upkeep of the stations. A specific project that Ethan completed this year was fixing the pump testing pit. It consisted of sandblasting, painting, grinding, and prying apart metal and wood in a confined space that has been there from the training towers beginning. Of course, that was a project that occurred on one of the hottest stretches of the year. Additionally, it required wearing a SCBA air pack and protective clothing. It wasn't a project many of us were jumping at doing. This was just one of the many projects that Ethan completed this year, but it was the most grueling. Without his efforts, it would have been costly in the future. Along with Ethan keeping up things around the station, he is always dependable when it comes to covering shifts that are short, responding to callbacks, continuing to attend technical rescue classes. Ethan and two other firefighters attended a structural collapse class and is in the process of providing this vital training to the entire Fire Division. Ethan also continues to assist new firefighters with learning how to operate our fire trucks by creating a program that all firefighters now go through. This created consistency and prepared personnel for all types of situations that he may face while operating the pump, aerial ladder, and driving. Ethan is a valuable coworker, employee, and a friend to all. If a coworker ever needs help outside of work, Ethan is always the first to lend a
officers, and congratulations, Ethan, for well-deserved recognition.
hand. Even with his busy schedule, Norfolk Fire is undoubtedly better because of his presence.
That takes us to item 23 on the council agenda, another proclamation, this time to recognize
Ethan, if you'd come forward, please. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
the 50th anniversary of the Community Development Block Grant Program and its contributions to the city of Norfolk. Proclamation reads as such: Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, has existed since 1975, providing state and local governments with the resources needed to develop viable urban communities by offering decent, affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities, primarily for persons of low and moderate income. And 2024 marks the 50th anniversary of the CDBG program. And whereas the city of Norfolk has been a beneficiary of the CDBG program, receiving substantial support for key projects that have enhanced the community's economic vitality, infrastructure, and quality of life. And whereas over the past 10 years, the city of Norfolk has received a total of almost $4.3 million in CDBG funds, which have been instrumental in completing significant projects such as Johnson Park, the Norfolk Whitewater Park Restoration Project, River Point Square, and downtown facade improvements, among others. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Mooney, Mayor of the city of Norfolk, along with the Norfolk City Council, designates the year 2024 as a time to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the CDBG program in recognition of its tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and the economic well-being of our community. The 50th anniversary of the Community Development Block Grant Program in the city of Norfolk is hereby recognized, and we encourage all citizens to take due note of the observance. Okay. We have Candace Alder, our city economic development director.
Hello. I'll just say, yeah, just a few words and then invite some guests that we have here for the presentation, but I just want to thank the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for looking at our projects and coming alongside our community and funding them. On the overhead here, you see not only CDBG, but we learned that CCCFF, which is Civic and Community Center Financing Funds, is celebrating their 25th anniversary of those funds, which have also been instrumental in moving some projects forward in our community. So appreciate the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. When I looked back, the city of Norfolk has actually received more than $16 million in grants from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development since 2005. So that 4.2 is actually just CDBG. Of that 16 million, 11.4 was granted in the past 10 years. And so we've worked very hard to identify projects and funding sources to come alongside the priorities that have been set forth in the community. So that 4.3 is actually community development block grants. And those funds have come alongside us in funding projects like housing rehabilitation through an owner-occupied rehabilitation program, facade improvements throughout our downtown district, a mobile healthcare clinic that actually came into fruition after COVID. Oh, on the screen right now. Good timing. Recreation projects, including River Point Square, which was a part of our downtown revitalization, Johnson Park and the Norfolk Whitewater Park. Those were part of a tourism grant, as well as our skate park, which was also a part of a tourism grant. It's also helped fund infrastructure improvements, including those seen along Braish Avenue. And then those funds have also helped establish a revolving loan fund program for housing development, specifically workforce housing. So I just want to thank the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. I actually have Nicole Bartels here with the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. I'd invite her to say a few words.
I want to thank the city of Norfolk. We actually highlighted the city as one of our outstanding cities in the month of August to celebrate our 50 years of CDBG. And so we are umbrellaed under the Housing and Urban Development HUD, and they actually used the stories and the celebration that we provided as a way to get it out to across the U.S. And so congratulations to Norfolk for being highlighted as one of our communities. So thank you.
Go ahead and stay up here, Nicole. Nicole and I had the opportunity to go around and take a look at some of the projects today. So it was fun showing her what the funds have done here in Norfolk. Would also invite representatives from the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, Mandy Gier and Andrea Larson are here. Their team is incredibly vital to our efforts in the application and grant administration process. And then I've invited a couple of staff members. Melissa Figueroa from the economic development team, if you want to come up. Melissa Drevicki from our finance team. There's a lot of people who work behind the scenes as we facilitate these grants. Brianna, if you will come join us for the picture. Did I get everybody? You guys want to come on up? Oh, Steve, will you come up too for CDBG projects? You're certainly part of the structure.
Oh, Steve. Steve, stand back behind the podium.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Candace, for coordinating that recognition. Thank you to State DED for being here and for all the assistance throughout the years. NED for your help and the economic development staff, Candace and Mel. A lot of work goes into these grant applications, and a lot of these projects that were highlighted would not have been possible without them. So that's very much appreciated, and it's certainly contributed to Norfolk's quality of life improvements in recent years. Thank you very much. Okay. That takes us through the special presentations portion of the council agenda. We will now move into the regular agenda, and item number 24 would entertain a motion to consider Resolution 2024-63, approving the mayor's appointment of Kylie Soderberg as city clerk for the remainder of the mayor's four-year term pursuant to Section 16-309 of Nebraska Revised Statutes.
I will offer for consideration Resolution 2024-63, approving the mayor's appointment of Kylie Soderberg.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. I'll just say a few words here. We had the opening for city clerk of Norfolk come about due to Brianna Durst's resignation of that role to take on another role within the city. And I want to stop here, and I know she doesn't want me to do this, but to recognize Brianna for her years of service in this role, which is honestly one of the most challenging amongst city positions. So many moving parts, so much time, so much attention to detail required in this job. And Brianna did just an excellent, excellent job from start to finish. And so let's take a moment to recognize Brianna. So we are sad to see her leave that position, but also very excited for who will be taking her place. We had a very competitive search and interview process for Brianna's replacement at clerk, but one person really stood out for her hard work, dedication, professionalism, comprehensiveness, and thoroughness in the work that she does and has done already for the city of Norfolk. Kylie Soderberg is my appointment to the position of city clerk. Kylie's worked for the city already for, how many years, Kylie?
Three years.
Three years in various roles, and it's been my experience that in each of those roles, she's gone above and beyond, has done a very thorough professional job in every task given, and it was clear to me and the other council members on the hiring committee that Kylie was more than ready for taking on this position. So we're very excited for her to begin contingent on the council's approval of her appointment. And there's no turning back now, Kylie.
That's right.
This is it. All right. I'll stop there. If there's any other need for discussion, we can have it. Otherwise, I would ask the council for their vote of approval.
I'd like to congratulate Kylie. Her new position, but Brianna, thank you for everything since you've been the city clerk in my time on council. You've been a great help and assisted me in any way possible, so thank you very much.
Well said.
I just want to say thank you for everything. You've done a lot for us. Thank you.
Yeah, I think everybody agrees with that sentiment.
Kylie, do you want us to table this?
No, thank you.
All right. Okay. If nothing else, if no further discussion, ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Resolution 2024-63 is adopted.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's official. All right. Now skipping to item 26, would look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for bids for the water extension 25th and Sheridan project.
All for consideration.
Second.
Motion and second. For some background on this, Chad Roberts, our Water Systems Manager. Chad, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. What we got before you here is a permission to advertise for bids for a small water district that we're looking up at 25th and Sheridan. This project consists of 165 feet of water main. This water main is going to extend to the east of Sheridan, or excuse me, 25th Street, and it's to serve a residential property up there, 2404 Sheridan Drive. This individual had a well that failed there, and we do have water within the 300 feet like city code, so this project extends that water service to meet his needs. This project, we are looking at getting completed this fall as quickly as possible so we can bring that water service online for that property owner. Like I said, this is just to advertise for bids, and I do have the property owner here and the council here, if you have any questions for him. Recommend approval.
Mayor and council, I'll add a little bit to that. So we did originally explore a creation of a water extension district on this project, working with the landowner as a function of just the costs associated with the project. He requested, I guess the end result was we are not creating a district. We are just going to do a project. There'll be a portion of that project, a portion across 25th Street that will pay, and then the landowner has agreed he'll pay his portion lump sum upfront. So that saves about $5,000 we would have to have to create a district and go through that process.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions at all? Or public input?
Can we hear from the property owner? If you feel uncomfortable with that, can they come up and kind of just speak to the project?
Would you like to step up, Roger?
I just want to make sure, like, have you talked to your neighbors? Is there, what's the climate up there? Does everyone knows this is probably coming down the pipe?
I'm pretty sure everybody knows the climate up there after the annexation.
Can you tell us your name, sir? Just, sorry. Could you tell us your name, please?
My name's Roger Stephensmeyer. I live at 2404 Sheridan Drive.
Thank you.
So when the annexation took place, nobody liked it. And my concern was at that time was when my well would fail, because at that time I did have problems with the well getting plugged up, and I cleaned it a few times. And Dietz told me, well, you know, it's going to fail in time, so. And according to the annexation, I cannot dig a new well and do a major repair on it. Is that correct? Anybody?
That is correct. Whether you're directly inside city limits or within our two-mile jurisdiction, if there's water within 300 feet, then we do a connection.
Okay. So I need some water. Any other questions?
No. Thank you. Thank you. Steve, so would he be the first of the?
He is. He is the first property east of Sheridan, or east of 25th on Sheridan. He's on the north side.
Okay.
And we did, Chad, I do believe there was some conversation with the gentleman to the south, and he was not interested at this time.
Is that good? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this or comment? Okay. Discussion, council? If none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right. Item 27, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number 1F with Rettgen's Construction for the water district number 128 Norfolk 140 project resulting in a net increase of $17,606.
I'll offer a motion for consideration.
Second.
Motion second. And again, for some background on this, Chad, please.
Yes, this here is for the water district 128 out there at Norfolk 140. This project here was awarded on May 6 of 2024 for a cost of $262,702. This change order here, 1F, is for some concrete removal, some barricades along the highway there. We had to remove some of the highway there to connect to our 24-inch water main. That increased the cost of $17,606. So that brings our revised contract amount for this project of $280,308. Staff's looking for approval.
Also, just to note on that, that that is under a district and that is paid for by the developer.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Chad. Any questions? Or more public input or comment? Okay. Council discussion. If none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 28, would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contracted yard restoration LLC for the installation of the nature playground in Johnson Park in the amount of $345,753.42.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. For some background on this, Steve Ramus, our Public Works Director. Steve?
Mayor and council, in the original project, there were three park structures, specifically three picnic structures. One of those was eliminated as a function of the conversation around the concession stand and family restroom to serve the ice rink in Sparts Court area. When we eliminated that, there being three in the original project, that reduced the bid quantity by 33%. Whenever we have that significant of a price reduction, we are a quantity reduction. We're aware that there could be an impact on the contractor, supplier, and supply cost on that. They did ultimately submit documentation. And so what this is doing is this is, it removes the three picnic shelter furnishes and the three picnic shelter installs and provides for two picnic shelter furnishes and two picnic shelter installs at a modified price. The net deduct on
And we did, Chad, I do believe there was some conversation with a gentleman to the south and he was not interested at this time.
That good? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this or comment? Okay, discussion, council? If none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, item 27. Would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number 1F with Rettgen's Construction for the water district number 128 Norfolk 140 project resulting in a net increase of $17,606.
I'll offer a motion for consideration.
Second.
Motion second. And again, for some background on this, Chad, please.
Yes, this here is for the water district 128 out there at Norfolk 140. This project here was awarded on May 6 of 2024 for a cost of $262,702. This change order here, F1F, is for some concrete removal, some barricades along the highway there. We had to remove some of the highway there to connect to our 24 inch water main. That increased the cost of $17,606. So that brings our revised contract amount for this project of $280,308. Staff's looking for approval.
Also, just to note on that, that that is under a district and that is paid for by the developer.
Thank you, Steve, thank you, Chad. Any questions? Or more public input or comment? Okay, council discussion. If none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 28 would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contracted yard restoration LLC for the installation of the nature playground in Johnson Park in the amount of $345,753.42.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. For some background on this, Steve Ramus, our Public Works Director. Steve?
Mayor and Council, in the original project, there were three park structures, specifically three picnic structures. One of those was eliminated as a function of the conversation around the concession stand and family restroom to serve the ice rink and sports court area. When we eliminated that, there being three in the original project that reduced the bid quantity by 33%. Whenever we have that significant of a price reduction, we are a quantity reduction. We're aware that there could be an impact on the contractor supplier and supply cost on that. They did ultimately submit documentation. And so what this is doing is this is, it removes the three picnic shelter furnishes and the three picnic shelter installs and provides for two picnic shelter furnishes and two picnic shelter installs at a modified price. The net deduct on the overall change order is $18,318.55.
Steve, I'm going to interrupt you. We're on the, we're talking about the nature playground item on this one, on item 28.
Whoops, I'm sorry.
Getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All the giants for that, getting ahead of myself.
28, and Steve, I do want to, before you go into this one, I want to just note that this is the final installment of the state grant money that Johnson Park was awarded. Correct, this nature playground component?
So I can review that, review that quickly, Mayor. That grant, that state grant we got was for $1,997,409. 760, a little over, well, 762,409 went into the original Johnson Park scope. 300,000 was for the restroom concession stand at the sports court and ice rink. Park irrigation was listed there at 300,000. We had 60,000 for trees, 70,000 for wave finding, 80,000 for park furnishings, 100,000 for the, to do something with the old gatehouse. And then there was 325,000 in that for the nature playground area. So as we've been carving that, carving all of those different things up and tackling them a little bit one at a time, we're tracking those dollars against that. So currently, and that includes some of the change order items here that we'll be going through, we're $1,687,781.44 into that grant. That leaves $309,627.56 for some of those remaining items. Now, again, we may, ultimately, we may not need as much as we have allocated for trailway finding or landscape and trees or for the, some of that gatehouse work. But those dollars, those dollars are all flowing between those specific items related to the park. So again, we had $1,997,409 in the grant. Currently with all the change orders and contracts, we're at $1,687,781.44. And that does include, that number I read would include the award of the nature playground at $343,553.42.
Steve, I know in the past that when we've done these playground setups, we've sometimes had parks and rec do some of the labor. Is that a possibility at all in this and would that save us any money?
I don't think it is. It's a little difficult without Nathan being here. You know, if there was to be some conversation around that, I can't obviously say there wouldn't be some cost savings on the contract side. What I would indicate is the contractor here, I have not met anybody from Yard Restorations. But I believe of that contract, mm, 250-ish is just furnishing, just the price to get the materials here. The actual labor cost on the project is fairly small. Most of it is tied up in the materials.
Steve, can you go over some of the design?
I can. Val, Nathan sent us some photos of the design and then I've got some plan sheets I could show as well if you want to bring those up. So I think Nathan has about four graphic images of what the park, the final design would look like. I don't necessarily understand the components. There's up in the, up in the upper left corner of that, as you're looking at that, you'll see some benches. There's some benches there. I believe there's like a chalkboard that folks can write on. It's kind of an educational area of the park. As you would work your way to the south and right, that is a sand, essentially a sandbox. You'll see there's rocks around it. There's stumps of stump benches and stumps around that for the kids to play on. I'm not exactly sure, but I see there's a rock feature there for them to explore the rocks, play around the rocks. And then as you come back down into that final area, that's the third area. Again, just more, we've reserved two or three large, the large granite stones out of the park, the river project. And so those would be implanted up into this area. I think this is a mulch bed area. Again, there's the wood benches around it. There's different sizes of wood stumps for kids to crawl on, play on. It's an area for, you know, the public to take young children and just let them explore the rocks and rocks and wood and stumps of a nature area.
Val, can you show just where this would be sited at within the park? We're talking about the bowl area.
So, so here's.
East of the amphitheater.
Yeah, so here's, if you want to, can you turn that 90 degrees Val, just to orient it north? So that's how that would sit, north to south. Those three circled areas, I kind of drew those three circled areas in, kind of representing that educational space there to the north, north left corner, and then the two different play areas. And there are three more images as well of what that final, kind of that final design to give you a better idea of what's going on in those spaces.
Having been part of some of these discussions, Steve, I think the idea here was to activate the space fairly proximate to the amphitheater for smaller children. Families enjoyed events happening there and kids could be part of this nature themed play area. Not sure that it's shown here, but there was anticipation of a small water feature, running water. And those two boulders that are being retained, as you said, from the river project as climb features.
Yeah. If you want to go back, go back to this, I don't know if there are other images there just to click through Val quickly or just to give the different perspectives of what's there. There is, you're correct, Mayor, there is an anticipated water feature. Again, it would be for, you know, they're designed for the toddlers. I would say the children under two. But there is a concept for something there to be added in the future.
I believe that was an option for smaller children whose parents did not necessarily feel comfortable with them being near the river front area. And as a reminder, you laid it all out, Steve, but this, that nearly $2 million grant was made possible through Nebraska Game and Parks for this specific project. That grant application had to specify the different components of the park in which the money would be designated to. And so this is the last portion, the last piece of the puzzle in terms of playground space, correct?
That's correct.
So these funds had to be dedicated to something certain. They can't be used for the Keno funds we invested to help reduce that or the CHAFT investment?
Yeah, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but they were designated specifically for the use as laid out as part of the application for the funding.
My recollection is they were specifically written into the funding bill. That's correct.
And as they are ARPA funds, there's a timeline involved in expending the funds, essentially use them or you lose them, correct?
I'm not familiar with the date, but yes, they are tied to a date.
Okay.
Steve, I had a question here. So we're looking at the, I guess it'd be the five benches in the tune of like $6,700. What is the, I mean, what is the plain log? What is the, why is the added cost or the extra cost, I guess I feel, for that?
You say extra cost?
Well, I mean, five, five piece log cluster is $6,700. What is special about the logs?
They're hardwood, so they come off the west coast, they're hardwood. So they are going to last about as long as a wood log would last. Yes.
Input, yeah.
Councilmembers, Mayor, I'm Chuck Borgen, I'm the owner of Yard Restoration. And to answer your question about the logs, they come out of Canada and they're treated with some form of oil to keep the rot down. That, so the cost of getting them here and the treatment and they're, the hand, or probably not handmade, but they make them specific for each job. They don't have a yard full of logs that they just ship out and you're on your own. They make them, they design it and they make them specific for each job.
Do we have a shelf life, a use life, how long these logs will last, especially in this climate?
Answer that question.
Chuck, some of the material, the ground material around the boulders is necessary for fall, to prevent injuries from kids falling, correct? It's a soft landing, so to speak.
Correct, so like, the, if you look at the top left corner of that, there is a water feature there. The concrete that leads down into the spillway or into the sandbox, there's this, they call it a spillway. There's a pump up there. The rocks, I'm assuming, are to keep kids from sliding all the way through there. Their requirements of how far off the ground or off of the finished surface of the sand are very specific. They come with a safety standard and an ASTM safety standard. Then if you go back behind that, there's what they call a boulder climber. That is, it's, I believe, 12 inches of certified safety mulch that goes into that. So, yeah, there's quite a bit of safety feature there. And I'll work closely with Bynon Stock on the install portion of it to make sure that it's insulted their engineer specifications.
And this project had been underdesigned for some time, as you said, by Bynon Stock? And so you've consulted with them on the materials?
I've been working with Bynon Stock since late March.
Okay.
When do you think the completion of this would be?
Well, if I can get to work tomorrow, I'll be done with it before Thanksgiving. But I don't think that's going to happen, so.
Any other questions for Chuck while he's here, contractor? Thank you, appreciate that. Any other discussion on this or comment?
So this is grant money that either you use it or lose it. There's, and this is not any taxpayer money, this is not any? It is solely grant money that the Game and Parks has solicited in that $2 million to use in Johnson's Park.
Their original funds were from ARPA and then designated through the state via Nebraska Game and Parks, right? Yeah, these were state ARPA dollars that were made eligible for a Game and Parks grant. And that was awarded to Johnson Park for this project and then the other components that have already been completed within Johnson Park. The playground, ice rink, amphitheater, so.
I guess I'm just asking for public clarification because this is a substantial amount of money and I don't necessarily think that everybody understands this is designated for Johnson's Park and it is a grant, it's use it or lose it. For clarification.
That's correct, Councilman. It is tax dollars, but it is through the form, as the mayor indicated, of federal money that came through the state. And so then it got passed down to various projects the state would approve. So this was approved through a grant process the city went through as part of this project that was submitted for Johnson's Park for, as this project for the nature playground was listed as part of the grant application form. So to say we don't want it, that is money lost to the city, basically. That will go somewhere else ultimately. So, but you're correct, that is not city money.
That is why I'm trying to clarify this for everybody who's not been part of this.
To the city through a grant.
Note, part of those funds, ARPA dollars, and the hundreds of millions of dollars went to cities like Omaha and Lincoln. This is some of the crumbs off the table, so to speak, I would argue. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Snorton, Webb, Hildebrand, Clausen. Voting in opposition, Muren, motion carries.
Okay, item 29. Would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with Huff Construction Nebraska LLC, South Dakota Limited Liability Company for Johnson Park Improvements Bid Package III. Park Structures Project Resulting in Net Decrease of $18,318.55.
I'll offer for consideration the approval of change order number one.
Second.
Motion second, and Steve, for some background on this.
Yes. Feels a little bit like deja vu here talking about this, but as I mentioned earlier, this change order is for the Johnson Park Structures, which included three picnic shelters originally. One of those picnic shelters was eliminated as a function of locating the concession stand and family restroom just north of the sports courts. That change did result in a 33% reduction in the units. And when that happens, we often expect to hear that there's, that that change, anything over 25%, it's not uncommon to get a request as a function of a supply chain increase on that price. So this originally had the furnished picnic shelters at $18,000 apiece and the install was at, I don't like the way this is structured. The install was, I think, 96. Shelter to install three divided by 24,000, so the installs were 8,000 apiece. As we received the backup information from the contractor suppliers, the prices for the furnish went from 18 to about 22.9. And the install price moved from eight to 8,950, 8,950 each. So the net change to the project is a deduct change order for $18,318.55.
Steve, I know you mentioned it earlier, but why did we remove one of the picnic shelters?
That shelter was going to go where the concession stand ultimately ended up, just north of the sports court and ice rink. I think, you know, it was Parks Department that made that decision to eliminate that. It could have been, you know, in hindsight, we probably could have relocated it or put it into a different park even. You know, we would have had to have some conversation there, but it was, the Parks Department eliminated it or reduced the quantity from three to two.
Steve, I know you might know this or not, but are they still going to put the basketball court? Steve, I know you might know this or not, but are they still gonna put the basketball court, basketball hoops in there?
Um, I've been on the outside of that conversation, I don't know if Andy's had any more of that. That is still, I think, in discussion. It's just how, how we could do that potentially and I know they're concerned about the removal of the, the boards and so forth for the, for the skating rink. I think there's some conversation, does it, does it stay year-round? Does it move to more of a roller, roller hockey type, type rink during the summer? Last I heard, I heard some conversation going on about a different type of hoop, more maybe a cannon levered type hoop versus a hoop that sits inside the court. It'd be something you'd be more familiar with, like in a high school setting where a cannon lever's out so they could stick it on the outside and cannon lever it in. But ultimately, I don't know the answer to the, to that question.
Steve, did they explore another area for this? It seems kind of odd that we're only saving eighteen thousand dollars and eliminating one where we could have found probably a very usable space of a picnic shelter.
By the time, as, as I was engaged in that conversation, it was too late to back up on that.
Why is that?
They had already been ordered and shipped.
So we're voting on something that's already decided?
I would, essentially, yeah, I mean, the picnic shelters are installed, there were two shipped and delivered and installed. The function of manufacturing and shipping those, just doing, just manufacturing two and shipping two, they're, they're built, they're built to send to the, to the client. And so when we, apparently when we ultimately put in the order for two versus three, that changed, that changed shipping cost, you know, per unit and, and resulted in a price increase per unit.
Steve, did the location of the concession stand then change from original design, which displaced that third shelter?
Yeah, originally, when we, when we put the project together and bid, bid out the shelters, concession stand didn't exist at that time.
Any other questions? Okay. No further discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Arns, Snorton, Webb, Hildebrand, Clausen, Muirin. Voting in opposition, Grandquist, motion carries.
Right, item thirty, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number two with Huff Construction Nebraska LLC, South Dakota LLC Company for the Johnson Park Improvements Bid Package One, Sport Court and Splash Pad Project Resulting in An Increase of fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars, eighty cents.
I'll offer for consideration approval of change order number two.
Second.
Motion second, Steve, once again, some background on this, please.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, these costs on here are specifically related to the, to the concession stand and are included in our cost tracking against the concession stand project. So these will be paid for through those grant dollars related to the concession stand. This is a change order totaling fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents, provides for the utility stub-ups from the sewer and water service connections. It's the stub-ups into the floor of the building. And then also as a function of citing the, the concession stand in proximity to the, to the sports court. Ultimately, as, as the final grade for the concession stand was, was set, it did develop a drainage issue and so we had to install an, an area drain, drain tile and storm drain to drain the area between the concession stand and that sports court. So those two items are listed here, the stub-ups were thirty-seven hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents and that area drain and drain tile and storm drain, ten thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. And again, those are, those are being tracked as part of the cost on the concession stand.
Thank you, Steve, any questions on this?
Steve, if I'm hearing you right, this is work that has already been completed?
That is, that is correct, councilman. It still requires a formal change order to modify the contract.
Further questions or discussion?
Well, what I'm, what I'm looking at over here is we've got a net increase, if you go through all the agenda package here, forty-two thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars, I feel like that needs to be talked about in discussion if all this stuff is already done and now we're talking about a thirty-four, forty-two thousand dollar increase.
Right, this is all, these, these are all, these are all budgeted and tracked through the overall project.
I understand that, but it's, what we budgeted and then what we're voting on, or is a net increase to Johnson Park, I'm just...
Right, and so within Johnson's Park, we have a budget of X dollars. The project is, right now, all the costs are underneath our overall budget for the project, so.
What would you say that you're, you're, you're under right now as far as what you budgeted and what we're voting on tonight?
We are tracking all of, all of the costs associated with any change order request or potential change orders and we're gonna be, we'll be coming in right at budget.
I think it, I think what you're...
So in, in the end, there'll be a, a larger change order coming in on the First Street project. That's probably gonna be about a negative hundred and, hmm, probably in the range of a negative hundred and fifty, maybe up to negative two.
Steve, from my experience on bigger projects like this, it's not unusual to see a series of change orders, both increases and decreases, when you're talking about a large budget project and whether it's street infrastructure or parks, is that accurate?
And, and so this is, some of this is a function of, of needing to peel the projects apart. When we bid the one project, we kinda bid it all, it's one big project. As we peeled that apart, it's, you know, sometimes, sometimes there's a, there's a gap between what we peel off and put under contract and, and in the end, you end up with, you know, like, in general, concession stand itself, we purchased a concession stand and had that delivered. I think that was two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to purchase that concession stand. So everything else associated that you would typically wrap into a, a project like we did for the upper restroom, all of those pieces have to come separately. And so that all gets rolled into the, you know, the dollars that we budget for that project. We track all this against the budget. It is a, it is, it is a large complex project. You know, there's five, ten different projects that make up the Johnson's Park project.
And several contractors and some work that had to be, that, that was done by city staff, so.
And, and I will, and I am working, and I am working on it. I will bring and we can consume in, in a, in a regular council session. I can roll through the entire budget breakdown and, and just kind of, you know, the, the dollars that came in, where things went, what was originally contracted, total change orders into the project and show how all that rolls up.
Would that be a more appropriate time to approve change orders at that time? The change orders had already been done?
There, there will be, these are, you know, the, the next change orders on these projects will be the final change order. And what the final change order does is it, it, your final payout needs to match the final contract price. And, and so they, they could, but in some cases, I can't, for, for work that's done, I can't pay the contractor for work that's done without the change order. So in some cases, they're sitting here waiting for a, a check that can't, you know, and I can't pay that. So this allows me to pay for that work. And like, like the mayor said, this is, I mean, this is very standard process.
Steve, this order and the next few, except for First Street Bridge, also again are part of that, that grant package from the state as well. The, the work completed was part of the grant funding.
These are, yeah, these are part, these next two, thirty-one, thirty-two and thirty-three are all, all part of, all part of the origin, original scope, I guess, within the project. They were bid out separately, they were part of that one big project we bid and then ended up carving it out. At least thirty-three is.
Any other questions or discussion?
Steve, you had mentioned that, go ahead and make it a payment, but versus Shane's request to hold off on this till we got more information or a final payment. But would we have the opportunity to pay this at the end of the month as the, as a note state and look at it again, at least on the next meeting?
We can, I wouldn't have any other, I wouldn't have final change orders necessarily for then. It would still just be this change order at that time. The final change order would probably show up in December as we close out the project.
Steve, do you think that maybe like a, a working document here wouldn't be a good idea? Just to make sure, just for clarification's sake, so when people see a change order, they, they just, they just know where we are on the, on that running total in that document?
I, I can do that. Like, like I say, there, there's, it's a big project, this is about seventeen million dollar project, there's a lot going on in there. I mean, I could have it for the next meeting, I could have it probably for subcommittee on Monday.
I think there's probably no reason to, all of these, since their public record, when they come to us anyway, could be compiled and put on a website, on the city website for full view. But these, for the matter in front of us, I mean, this is the functionality of getting these bills paid for, for work that has been done, that, that's what you're saying, that's why we're seeing these now as opposed to waiting for two months until we have all of them.
This is, this is work that has extra scope, I don't have a line item to pay it on in the original contract. So in a line item contract, if we go over the original quantity in the line item, I can just pay that line item more, more quantity. And then we finalize, in the final change order, we adjust that. Here, some of this is new line items, so I've got no way to pay it.
I think what I'm hearing the council say, and I, I agree, is that we just want better communication. We just want better understanding what's going on and, and maybe we could be in on some of these emails and these change orders before they come to us and we can ask questions then and be a part of this communication ahead of time.
I just think it's important where the dollars are coming for paying, you know, we talked about the grant, where the ARPA fund grant, whatever, but then we also, we've got, as far as the city stake on this, we've got Keno dollars and CHAF dollars vested in this. Those Keno dollars pull from other projects, so I just kinda wanna know what is being paid through Keno, what is being paid through CHAF. So that's kinda where it's, it, that's where I'm...
Right, and that's accounting.
And that's a good question, Shane, that's what I was getting at before. These, these projects that we're talking about here, Splash Bag, Sport Court, that was part of the grant, that, those, those were all components, that were part of the grant.
Item thirty-two is part of the grant also?
Well...
We're not there, yeah.
I know, but I'm just, that's where, but it's, yeah.
Yeah, item thirty, the item, the item up, the item up is these costs, these costs, fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars is being paid for out of the one point nine million dollar grant.
Any further questions or discussion on this? Okay, if not, please vote.
All councilmembers voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty-one, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with Elcorn Paving Construction Company for the Johnson Park Improvement Project Bid Package Two, Upper Park Resulting in An Increase of one hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars seventy-five cents.
I'll offer for consideration of approval, change order number one.
Second.
Motion second, Steve, once again, please.
So I'm gonna draw your attention as well to, to change order number thirty-two, because thirty-one and thirty-two go together. So as a function of, of staff working with the contractors to get the project wrapped up as soon as possible, we reached out to Elcorn Paving to see if they couldn't jump in and help United finish up the project. They were willing to do that and so we ended up moving some of the work out of United's contract, which would be item thirty-two, that's a deduct change order of a hundred and twenty-two thousand seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And that, that portion of sidewalk was then moved into Elcorn's contract. And so this, this, this change order, item number thirty-one on the agenda, there's a hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents here. Hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-two of that is the sidewalk add. And addition to that, there's twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars in here for the concession stand. Those concession stand items, what we did through this contract for the concession stand was change order item one, eighteen, crushed concrete foundation pad for the concession stand. And then when, we also have the six-inch, there's a six-inch reinforced sidewalk that goes around, around that concession stand. So those, those two, why, there's other items in the change order, we're just reducing or, or modifying the contract as built quantities. But these two quantities alone add up to just shy of the hundred and forty, hundred and forty thousand, hundred and forty-three thousand. These two items are, it's like a hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, just in those two items. So again, we need to pay Elcorn for the extra work they did and in order to pay them, you know, their hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars, I wanted to bring in these two change orders and show you a deduct of, of equal value or more against the United contract.
Steve, how does that work with those two contractors? You know, because obviously United would have lost some kind of revenue there, right? By giving it to Elcorn Paving?
They, they did, so United had, that was a subcontract item to Bainbridge out of Iowa. United reached out to Bainbridge to see if they would be open to having Elcorn come in and help them finish up. Bainbridge said they, they would, they'd appreciate that help.
So it was, it was smooth?
It was very smooth.
So if we're gonna run one thirty-one and thirty-two together, so United had originally bid the sidewalk improvements, right?
They did.
And they could not deliver on their, on their contract?
Well, they were delivering slower than we would like in order to get the project finished.
So then we hired, so did we reach out to Elcorn to pay this then?
We reached out and asked Elcorn if, if they, if they would consider, you know, coming over to the project to help United finish that out, yes.
I guess I'm, if we hired one contractor to the job, they can't deliver and we reach out to hire another contractor, they can deliver on, on the project. I mean, is there not liquidated damage to the United contractors at this moment? Because they can't deliver on the, on the product that they were gonna deliver to us?
We will bring forward a liquidated damage conversation as we work through the final change order. That's where that comes, that's where that conversation comes, is the final change order.
I mean, but you, you understand what I'm saying is that we, we hired somebody, they couldn't do the job, we rehire somebody. So we should be seeing a bigger deduct than a hundred and twenty-two thousand then?
Well, we would see liquidated, a liquidated damage item on the final change order. So there'll be some lump sum number or some number based on days, but there will be a liquidated damage number on the final change order, yes.
For this situation?
For, for the overall project.
So it's overall project, it will be spelled out individually for overall project? So it's overall project, it will be spelled out individually for overall project?
Yeah, there'll, there'll be, there'll be a, there'll be a conversation of, I think there were four or five milestones in that project, and so there'll be a conversation of how they, did they hit the milestone, didn't they hit the milestone, by how much over the milestone were they and what's the liquid damage, dated damages for, for that milestone, and we'll, we'll present that information and as we, as we would make some decisions around that and present that to Bainbridge, or I'm sorry, to United.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one more, you said something about a concession stand has gravel underneath of it, a rock underneath of it?
There's a crush, there's a crushed concrete foundation under there, yes.
But there's not a foundation, a poured foundation, it's crushed concrete?
Crushed concrete foundation, yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion or questions on this? Okay, if none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty-two, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number eight with United Contractors Incorporated for the First Street Bridge and End Stream Improvements Project resulting in a net decrease of a one hundred and twenty-two thousand seventy-seven dollars twenty-five cents.
I will offer for consideration of approval of change order number eight.
Second.
Motion second, Steve, please.
Yeah, if there's any more conversation, I'd be happy to add, but I think you understand what this is.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Is this a CHAF related on this?
Is this CHAF related, no, none of this is...
None of this, okay.
None of this is, there is, there is a very small piece of this that would be CHAF, so up along, up adjacent to First Street, they had about a, I don't know, twenty-four foot, thirty foot section of sidewalk open as part of the First Street project, that, that was, that, that was poured, that poured, what do I wanna say, Elcorn, Elcorn poured that closure on that sidewalk, so there was, there was about a twenty-four foot chunk of sidewalk in here that would be CHAF, yes.
So that would be a, a net decrease in CHAF related funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, just a little, a little bit there, so as, as we, as we do these projects on the, on the accounting side through, through my office, we have, within the, within the project pay app, you'll see the project is split up into subsections, subsection A is generally around paving, subsection B is utilities, water, sewer, and so those, those subgroups within the pay app on a line item contract, we track, there, there's a whole nother tracking system where we track how that's being paid, you know, we got lots of grants, we got CCCF grants, we got, you know, there's lots of grants, there's Keno dollars, so we track every line item in the contract against some funding source.
I understand that, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm getting at is it'd be nice to see what, you know, what is, what is being reduced out of Keno dollars, what's being reduced out of CHAF dollars, you know, and then obviously the grant dollars, because each of them, each of them hold a different meaning to the council, I would, I'm assuming we're all looking at that that way, so it'd be, I think it'd be important to see that as far as when we're, when we're approving or not approving change orders, so we kinda know what funds are covering, what portion of this project.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. I'll look at, and, and, I'll look at, I'll look at how we can, how we can digest that as part of the change order, you know, I think we'll need to make some changes to our change order form, so that, so that we're, we're showing the funding sources as well.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, last but not least, item thirty-three, look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with IES Commercial Incorporated for Johnson Park Improvement Project Bid Package Four, Park and Trail Lighting and Electrical Project resulting in a net increase of twenty-four thousand seven hundred seven dollars forty-six cents.
I would love to offer consideration of approval of change order number one with IES Commercial.
Motion in seconds, Steve Ramis, background, please.
Okay, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus on a, on a couple items in here, and we can, if you have some conversation, if you have other conversation there, go through, go through some of those, but this is a change order on our electrical contract with IES, this is a net increase of twenty-four thousand seven hundred seven dollars and forty-six cents. Again, the concession stand comes up as part of this, item number forty-four in the change order is, is ten thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-two cents, again, that is the electrical feeder over to the concession stand, another, another fairly large item on here is item forty, the backhoe excavation, the project was bid as a, more of a plow trench, there's a lot of debris in, in there, as we pushed out Nebraska Avenue, there's just, there was a lot of debris in the Nebraska Avenue, and some of this trenching is also more adjacent to the, the river itself, and there's, there's rock underneath, underneath some of that, so they had to get in a backhoe in order to excavate that, they couldn't pull their plow through there, and so that line item, there's about a thousand linear feet there of trench, trench work via, via backhoe to get the electrical conduits in the ground, so those are two of the larger items, in addition to that, there's some, there's, you'll see there's a series of, of ads and deducts related to the overall park electrical, I could try to answer questions around that, but I'm not as familiar with some of that work.
I just have like a question regarding the electrical, so obviously we pulled some of this change order back because we went from three picnic shelters to two, will those picnic shelters have like two-twenty volt running to them?
I don't see anybody here that can answer that, it does seem to me, and I'll have to get back to you, Councilman, we do have some two-twenty out there, I don't know that it's at each picnic shelter, but there is two-twenty in, in the park.
Steve, I thought it was fitting as well, is there any available, trying to get the voltage right, forty or fifty volt for food trucks or no?
There is, up, up along the sports court where that old parking lot was, there are specifically, I think, three or four stub ups, electrical stub ups for food trucks.
Okay.
That was, that was designed in.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion or comment?
Steve, do you see these as being the end of the change orders for Johnson's Park or do you anticipate...
Aside, yeah, this is, this is substantially the end, you know, that as we bring in the final change orders, there'll be some adjustment to final, final quantities, I am not aware of anything there that's gonna be substantial over all the contracts, I would say we're, we're probably looking at a net deduct as, as a function of all the final change orders.
Sue Beckman, eleven oh four East Park Avenue, I have a question, and I think, Steve, you partially answered it, but do you have a total to date that has been spent on the Johnson's Park project?
No, but that's easy for me to get, I don't, I don't have that.
And I know it's been discussed, but I would also like to see the breakdown with the CHAF and any grants and what the city itself has spent on this project?
Absolutely.
And then my last question has to do with maintenance, when this is all said and done, is the city staff gonna be able to provide maintenance for the ice rink, for the concession stand, for the splash pad, or are we gonna have to hire outside to do that?
Parks has been planning for this for two or three years.
So we can just depend on our Parks people to take care of all of our maintenance there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have not heard any conversation from, from Nathan or, or PJ.
So then we do have staff that is equipped to handle the amphitheater and, and the playground?
I believe he's gonna handle the concession stands probably with some part-time staff for those.
Well, I'm just talking about the maintenance.
But, yeah, the, the maintenance, the maintenance all planned, planned in, yes.
So is there any budget items planned for maintenance on this, the whole project, the water park, the, the white water rafting, any of that, if a rock falls out of place, city staff can go in and fix that?
I don't know that in the, in the, this, this next fiscal year's budget that, that there's any per se line item for that, I would expect as we get through, get through winter, get through next season and, and work on the budgets beginning in May, that, that there would be, some stuff start to show up in terms of maintenance.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Some of those were built, and I think, Steve, you answered that accurately, the concessions and the rental, revenue generation opportunities within these parks that we've not necessarily had before, and overall funding, I think follows roughly along these lines, a third the financing through grants and partnerships, like some of the grants that we talked about tonight, partnerships with Lory Elcorn NRD, the grants that Candace mentioned earlier, a third, private fundraising, businesses and individuals giving to this project, and a third, a variety of Keno and CHAF dollars from the city. Any other questions or discussion on this item? All right, if not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Move too fast, that concludes this meeting in the Norfolk City Council, we are adjourned.